Tuesday, May 16th. Today's invocation will be given by Pastor John Adolf, pastor of Antioch Baptist, missionary Baptist Church. Everyone, please silence your cell phones and please remain standing if you so choose for our nation's flag. Pastor Adolf, if you'll please go to the podium.
For every head bowed and every heart humbled, we want to spend this moment in prayer for our city. And I would that people of faith who may have different views of God take this moment to talk to the deity that you love. And after that brief moment of silence, I will petition the Lord that I love and live for every day. Heads about a moment of silence. And so it is, oh God, I approach you with a grateful heart of gratitude and thanksgiving for this marvelous day. Thank you, Lord, for life, health, and strength, and things that you've blessed us all with that money cannot buy, that credit will never charge, that checks will never write. So God, for those things that we know have to come from someone greater than we are, we bow and say, thank you. God, this morning, I am especially thankful for this marvelous country that we live in, for this nation being the greatest nation in the world, for the monumental metropolis of Beaumont, Texas, that has been for us a homestead and a resting place. Today, I say again, thank you. And God, today, I thank you for this moment in my stead. Never before, in my 32 years of ministry, 27 as a pastor, have I had the marvelous privilege of praying a petition as the lamp of municipal leadership shifts from one hand to another. So today, God, I don't take this moment lightly. I thank you publicly for the leadership that is outgoing, and I thank you even more so for that which is incoming. Today, Lord, I thank you for the loyalty, leadership, and all of the time and the energy and effort expended by our current mayor, Robin Muton. Thank you so much for her, for everything that she's done to try to make Beaumont be better. But God, today, I especially thank you for the mayor that is yet incoming, Roy West. God, I thank you for the race that he's run, for the election that he's won, and for the time and the, and the energy he will expend making Beaumont be a greater Beaumont for all of its citizens. Today, oh God, as I stand here making solemn supplications on the behalf of this entire city, I pray right now for Mayor Roy West, that God, you would order his steps so that he walks with you every day, that you would guide his thinking so that the wisdom that comes from him really came from you, and that God, that somehow, when all this settled, you would bless Roy West and his time and tenure so that he is a blessing first to you, his family, this city, this county, this country, and the world abroad. God, I pray for this entire city council today, that, Lord, you would give them a harmony, a synergy, and a unity like no other time, that, God, they would walk together in an altruistic brotherhood with each other, so that what is great for you becomes wonderful for Beaumont. It is in the name of Jesus Christ, who is my Lord and Savior, I make these solemn petitions and pleas. In your name I pray. Amen.
Man, please join us in the pledge to our nation's flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You Pastor Adolf. At this time, I would like to recognize our former mayor Ames and former mayor Moore, and all of the elected officials and judges that are present. Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Durio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Fellshaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Here.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Today, we will have a swearing in of our newly elected council members and mayor. We will recess for a reception right after the swearing in, at which, that time, those of you who wish to come back after the reception and the for year may do so. City manager, will you please take us to the results of the May 6, 2023 election?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. An ordinance canvassing the returns of the general election of the city of Beaumont, held on the 6th day of May, 2023, for the purpose of electing a mayor, two council members at large, four ward council members, wards 1, 2, 3, and 4, and providing for severability and providing for repeal. Whereas, after duly canvassing said returns, the city council found that the votes cast at said election for the candidates for said offices are as follows. Officer Mayor, Robin Muton, votes 7,739, percentages 47.37%. James Darrell Eller Jr., 137 votes, .84 percentage. Roy West, 8,460 votes, 51.79%. Office of Councilmember at Large, Michael Cooper, votes 3,851, percentages 16.44%. Baguita Big Hernandez Smith, 2,073 votes, 8.85%. Albert A.J. Turner, 9,246 votes, 39.48%. Terry Preston Roy, 1,138 votes, 4.86%. Randy Fellshaw, 7,110 votes, 30.36%. Councilmember Ward 1, Tahia Karishi, 1,115 votes, 25.25%. Taylor S. Neeld, Sr., 3,302 votes, 74.76%. Councilmember Ward 2, Mike Getz, 4,424 votes. Councilmember Ward 3, Edwin Samuel, 1,440 votes, 55.24%. Gary Senegal Jr., 547 votes, 20.98%. Carlton Sharp, 620 votes, 23.78%. And Councilmember Ward 4, Charles Chris Durio, 2,391 votes, which is 100%. And following, the following nine persons were elected to respective positions, subject to the taking of their oaths of office as provided by the laws of the state of Texas. For Mayor, Roy West. For Councilmember at Large, Louis R. Fellshaw. For Councilmember at Large, Albert Turner Jr. Councilmember Ward 1, Taylor Neeld. Councilmember Ward 2, Mike Getz. Councilmember Ward 3, Edwin M. Samuel. And Councilmember Ward 4, Charles Durio. So Mayor, you may call for a motion and second if you wish.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
Is there's, there's a motion and a second on the floor? All in favor, is, is there a discussion?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner.
Well, before we make the motion, I'd just like to take the time out to personally give my gratitude and respect to you, Mayor Muton. Been a pleasure serving for you for these two years. Some of the late phone calls, some of the business, some of the things we handle. And I want to thank my wife for allowing me to have that time with you. We talked a lot. I just want to let you know, I humbly appreciate you. And I think it's important that, you know, from my family to you, that we give you your flowers while you're still here. So me and my wife, we did purchase you some flower arrangements. And one thing I learned from you is how to have thick skin in politics. So I want to let you know, I appreciate that, and thank you for what you've done in your service, and I want you to have your flowers while you're still here, okay? So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. Councilmember Fellshaw.
Mayor, your administration will be remembered as one of first. First African-American female mayor elected, first female city attorney appointed, first African-American city manager appointed, and first Juneteenth celebration downtown. So thank you for your service to the community, and I pray God's best for you and your family as you go into the new chapter and season of your life.
Thank you. Councilmember Samuel.
Well, Mayor, I just say thank you for all that you've done to help me. We've been through some good days and some not-so-good days, but I know you love Beaumont, and I know you love this area, and I know you're not going, so thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Durio.
Thank you, Mayor. They've all said it, but I'm gonna say it again. Thank you. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for leading me, for your mentorship. When I, when I got elected, I thought I knew everything. When I got in this chair, I said, no, I don't. But I learned a lot from you. I learned how to be strong. I learned how to face my problems head-on, and I learned from you and my wife that everybody wasn't gonna like me. But, and you're not gonna please everybody. I learned that, but you just have to do what's in the best interest of your folks. You always said, do what's good for your folks. Your vote is your vote. You always said that. And, and we talked a lot on the phone also, and you called me, and I called you, and, and I'm glad I had my man cave. I spent a lot of time back there talking to you. But I'm, I'm gonna miss you, but I know you're not gonna be gone, because I am your ward councilman, so.
And I'm gonna call.
My number.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you.
Councilmember Getz.
You know, sometimes, Mayor, people refer to us as politicians, and those of us that have been elected and served know that we're not politicians, but we're public servants. And what you've done in your administration is epitomize the role of a public servant, and you have worked for the betterment of Beaumont, and thank you.
Thank you. To Mayor Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. I just simply want to say thank you for your service to Beaumont.
Thank you.
If I may, Mayor.
It's city manager.
Thank you. I'd like to thank you too for your service. I'd like to thank you for your commitment to this city and for this region and for the things that you've done. I truly feel this is not the end for you. I think it's the beginning. There's some great things ahead for you. And coming to Beaumont, I tried to rational, rationalize how, why I was coming here, and of course, I figured it was just an act of God, and I feel like you were part of God's plan in getting me here, so I thank you for that, and, and I wish you well in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with all of that said, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So I would like to give my comments, and I would like to say, it has been an honor to serve as mayor. Prior to serving as mayor, I served as Ward 4 for six years, and also served as Mayor Pro Tem. So it's been an honor and a pleasure to serve this entire city and all of its citizens. History was made, and it wasn't made just by me, it was made by the citizens here in Beaumont. Beaumont is richer for it, and I think we're a much better city for it, and I have the most regards for everyone that's sitting up here that's serving. And as I said, Beaumont will keep moving forward, and it will be building a better Beaumont. And I thank each and every one of you. I want to thank my husband, my father, my sister, all of the many campaign workers that worked, and so many people that work behind the scenes. My pastor, Pastor Edison Colbert and his wife, and everyone that's sitting here in this audience, I would like to say to each and every one of you, Beaumont is a great city. So thank you so very much, and we're gonna move forward with the oath. So I will ask if Judge Brannick. Judge Brannick, I'm sorry, not just yet. It's been a change of plans. So we're gonna start with Ward 1, Councilmember Taylor Neal.
Hello, everybody. There you go. You ready? All right. Aye.
Aye.
Taylor S. Neeld.
Taylor S. Neeld.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I have not directly or indirectly paid, offered, or promised to pay.
That I have not... What are you reading off of, Judge?
Really, really? I, Taylor S. Neeld, do solemnly swear.
I, Taylor S. Neeld, do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of Councilmember Ward 1.
Of Councilmember Ward 1.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state.
Of the United States and this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yes. Thank you, brother. Appreciate you. You got it.
So at this time, Councilmember Getz, Ward 2.
Councilmember Getz, which version would you like? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Right hand. I, Michael D. Getz.
Aye, Michael D. Getz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of Councilmember Ward 2.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of Councilmember Ward 2.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and the laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state, so help me God.
And of this state, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, you gotta make it a fish.
Councilmembers, Edwin Samuel, Ward 3.
In the name and the authority of the state of Texas, repeat these words. I, Edwin Samuel.
I, Edwin Samuel.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the office.
That I will faithfully execute the office.
Of Councilmember Ward 3.
Of Councilmember Ward 3.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability.
And will do the best of my ability.
To preserve.
To preserve.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And this state.
And this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Amen. Ward 4, Mayor Pro Tem Durio. And Judge Naomi Doyle.
I, Charles Durio.
I, Charles Durio.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Councilmember Ward 4.
Councilmember Ward 4.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And the laws.
And the laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Councilman at Large, Albert A.J. Turner.
I, Albert Turner Jr.
I, Albert Turner Jr.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of this office.
The duties of this office.
Of the Councilmember at Large.
Of the Councilmember at Large.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Councilmember at Large, Randy Fellshaw.
Either one. Either one. Come on, sis.
I, Louis R. Fellshaw.
I, Louis R. Fellshaw.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Councilmember at Large.
Councilmember at Large.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you.
Okay, Judge Brannick, will you please come forward? And Mayor-elect Roy West to administer the oath.
Place your left hand on that Bible and raise your right hand. I, Roy P. West Jr.
I, Roy P. West Jr.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Mayor of the city of Beaumont, Texas.
Mayor of the city of Beaumont, Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
So help me God.
So help me God.
May God bless you and the rest of this city council as you... May God bless you and the rest of this city council as you.
Just begin by thanking Mayor Robin Muton for her service. Following some new instructions here, we're gonna, what we're gonna do is be breaking for a recess here shortly. But for the council members and staff that would like to say a few words, if you have anything else to say, and then I will speak before we go on recess. Anybody have anything to say? I know y'all had a chance to speak a minute ago.
Congratulations, Mayor West. Let's go to work.
Add anything to that, so let's do it.
To the citizens of Beaumont, thank y'all for voting, thank y'all for electing us. If I didn't gain your support this go-around, hopefully I can do some things to gain it the second go-around. To Mayor Roy West, congratulations, and you know how I am, let's get to work.
All right.
All right.
First, to the winners of this election, let me say congratulations to council members that are returning to the new mayor. Welcome, and look forward to serving with everyone over the next two years. Number two, let me just thank everyone that participated in this election. All the candidates who ran, every voter who cast a vote for me, and all the candidates. My steering committee, my campaign manager, Robin Troy, my campaign treasurer, Bill Maxey, all the voters who worked so hard, all the volunteers who worked, all the donors that contributed to all the campaigns up here to help, help us to make it possible for us to get elected, and most of all, to my family and friends, and especially to my wife, who endures what we, as council members, go through in the time that we invest within the city. You know, yesterday, we were candidates and supporters, and we were campaigning, we had opponents. But today, now that the oath has been taken, we go back to being civil servants and the citizens of Beaumont. We're no longer opponents, we're no longer candidates, but we're civil servants. So it's time to roll up our sleeves, let's go to work, let's unite, let's become one city united, and let's do it for the better of Beaumont and its citizens. So thank you for the opportunity to serve again, this is my third term. I'm honored, and I will do my best to earn your trust and your respect, those who voted for me and those who didn't. I'll do everything I can to serve you and serve you well. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Simply say, to God be the glory for this day. I'm happy that we're all here, and I pray that we will continue to work for the good of our city. We'll put that as the forefront. Let this be a city set on a hill, and let us, let our light shine as we work toward the good for all the people of Beaumont. For those who voted for me, I say thank you. For those who did not, I say thank you for your vote of, for whoever you voted for. To those candidates that ran in the race with me, I say thank you. Thank you for the manner in which you campaigned. Thank you, Carlton, and thank you, Gary. So we have work to do, and let us, let that work begin. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Just like to say congrats to everybody that's up here, and look forward to working with you, Mayor West.
Like to say congratulations to all of the council members on your reelection to the council. Look forward to working with you. And Mayor West, I will, can't call you Mayor Lake West anymore, so congratulations on your election to the city council. I look forward to what opportunities out there for us, for all of us, to work together and get some things accomplished, and I look forward to working with you and all of this council. Thank you.
Like to say welcome back to my gentlemen who are coming back, and to Mayor West, I would say it'd be fun to work with you, but you've been working me. Results came in, so I look, continue to work with you and move the city forward. As the only girl left on the dice. My favorite color is, no, I'm just kidding. But it's gonna be fun, gentlemen.
Thank you. Well, I'll certainly keep my remarks brief, but I've got to start by thanking my wife, Tricia, and all of my family. And certainly, everybody that worked with me on the campaign over the last several years now. And Kate Carroll, I see right there, and Garrett Guidry's back there as well, Emily Neill. And then, that was Chris Clark, who's not able to be here today. But then, so many individuals, so many organizations stepped up, and with a tremendous amount of gratitude, I stand before you today. This morning, when I woke up, I, I knew who I served, as I do every day. I serve God first, and certainly, my family. Today, I, I get a new charge, and I'm eager to accept that in terms of serving the residents and citizens of the city of Beaumont on a daily basis. We have, as it's been said up here, the election is over, it is a, it is a new chapter, we turn a new page. And I am just pleased to be before you and let you know that each and every one of you, that I am honored and serve with, with much humility as your mayor. And however, what was in the past is in the past, because we've got work to do. And when, as I woke, walked up today, and I've seen it before, in our courtyard out there, we have a sculpture. It was put in 41 years ago, it's right out that window. And it's winning. And I always have a word for the year that I like to use, and it, and I want to add this for the word to the year for our city, because this is, our city knows how to win. We've gone through hurricanes, we've gone through floods, we've made national news, how we stand together as a city united. We have challenges, and I'm not going to ignore any of the challenges, and I know our council's not either. But we have so many opportunities. And I am grateful for every day that God gives us to address these, and as citizens and residents of Beaumont, no matter where you live, and certainly, all the employees of the city of Beaumont, who get it done every day. I want us to be the number one city, I want us to be the winning city in Texas. And when you Google Texas, Beaumont, Texas, you get winning, because we can across the board. And I just look forward to all the opportunities that this council is going to have before us in working with each and every one of you, and I have tremendous respect for each and every one of you in the process, and certainly, the staff that I get to have gotten acquainted with just in the last week really closely. So I'm grateful for that. So until, we're, we're gonna recess for a bit, so we can have some cake and cookies or whatever's out there. So thank y'all all for being here today. God bless you all.
May I need you to turn on your mic, please?
I was pushing the wrong one. Okay. May we have a roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim D'Urio.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Felschaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Here.
And Councilmember Neal. Thank you.
First order of business, we'll have a presentation on the legislative update by Mr. Chris Giglio with Capital Edge. Please come forward. What maybe would have been. They'd have known what you're about to say. Oh, I might have. Oh, that's that red button. How's this?
Mayor and members of the City Council, thank you for having me here today on this really special day. I don't take for granted these transitions in this country, and it was great to be here today to witness this. My name is Chris Giglio. I am with the firm. It's called Capital Edge and have been the city's federal advocate for many years now. My firm and its predecessors have worked for the city since 1981, and it's fantastic to be here and also to be working in DC on mayor behalf. I thought I might take just a minute to talk a little bit about who we are and what we do for those of us who are new in the council. As I said, we've been working for the city since 1981, and as you can see from this brief description, the things we do. I like to say we do anything besides windows. If it has something to do with Washington DC, we want to be involved and work with you and the city staff. It's also sometimes a kind of trite that I say that, you know, sometimes I'll be referred to as a lobbyist, and I will say that you, the city council, really are the true lobbyists for the city. I'm kind of a middleman that kind of provides the path for you. You have the great relationships. You know your city so much better than I do. And so being able to provide you with the background and information to win on behalf of the city is what I like to do. So next slide, please, Tina. Thank you. So just kind of some of the things that we've done on behalf of the city in recent years, and I guess the top one is starting to be not so recent, but I am really particularly proud of that with the natural gas royalties that were, that came from the Beaumont Municipal Airport is probably almost a decade ago now. But federal law said that the city was not able to use that, those funds on anything besides on the airport. And so as opposed to, you know, encrusting the runways in gold, we decided to go to Washington DC and figure out a way to unlock those funds to be used for other really important infrastructure programs in the city. Federal law said we couldn't do it. There was a good reason for it. Lots of larger airports like to keep their royalties on their airport grounds. And so it wasn't going to be a situation where we were going to have the FAA be able to say, oh, you guys, Beaumont, you can just do it without Congress sort of providing a path. And so we had to think really creatively about how we could get Beaumont, you know, there. And so what we ended up doing in a FAA reauthorization bill was essentially creating a program that would allow the FAA to provide waivers to general aviation airports for these sorts of things. And so again, I am very proud of the work that we and the city did on that, on behalf of the city. Pandemic relief funding, and actually, let me back up again with these recent accomplishments. These are not my accomplishments. These are the city's accomplishments. The city council, the city staff all contribute to all of this. The American Rescue Plan funding, which provided $33 million in direct funding to the city, was never going to be a sure thing. Congress likes to give money. It's easier for them to give money to the states and then say to the states, you guys figure it out, how to bring that down. And so working with organizations like the National League of Cities, Texas Municipal League, and others, we talked, we convinced Congress that that direct funding was, in fact, necessary. Then I've listed a couple of federal grant opportunities that we've worked on. Of course, the city is Then I've listed a couple of federal grant opportunities that we've worked on. Of course, the city is no stranger to disaster assistance, and so making sure that that disaster assistance comes back to the city in a timely fashion is, has been very important. The second to last one there, Congress has just sort of restarted in the last couple of years the practice of earmarking. Pork barrel spending is what a lot of people call that. Congressman Weber has decided to participate in that, and he was, we are grateful that he chose some improvements to the wastewater treatment facility for funding in the FY 2024 budget. He only gets 15 projects in his whole district to choose from. He chose one from Beaumont, so. Thanks, Tina. This is where I'll spend a little bit more time. We are right now in the 118th Congress, the first session of a two-year Congress. And as you guys are probably aware, we've got a slim majority in the House for Republicans, a very slim majority in the Senate for Democrats, and that is made legislating a little bit different. The, each, each side has their, has their priorities, and they're kind of doing their own thing, and, and there are a few things which I'll talk about later that we need to come together on. I would note that right now Congressman Brian Babin now represents parts of Beaumont. I can't remember in recent memory that Beaumont has had to, had more than one congressman. Dr. Babin is a senior member of the House Transportation Committee, so that will be important for the city, you know, given, given our needs down the line. I'd also note this, this coming year Senator Cruz is gaining seniority in the Senate. Senator Cornyn's always been a senior member of the Senate and in the leadership. Senator Cruz is now technically part of the leadership now as the ranking Republican on the Senate Commerce Committee. Commerce has jurisdiction over issues like telecommunications and railroads, among other things. So, so he'll be an important ally as well. And Congressman Weber, of course, continues to represent a good part of Beaumont, and he was recently appointed to the House Energy and Commerce Committee, which is a pretty plum assignment in Washington DC. So, so we're well represented in Washington. The last two I wanted to talk about a little bit more, and this is one, one of the things, two of the things that Congress really has to do this year, right? One is, is approve a budget for the fiscal year 2024, which would technically start on October 1 of this year. It's been about 25 years since Congress met that on, that October 1 deadline to approve a budget. I don't expect they'll do it this year as well, but hopefully within the calendar year, they will approve it. And then, of course, you've probably seen lots of news about the debt limit. We're getting ready to, the Treasury Department apparently has exceeded the debt limit already, and they've been taking what they call extraordinary measures to pay our bills. Treasury Secretary says probably around June 1, we won't be able to do that, and so Congress will need to raise that debt limit before that. There, that actually has a relationship to the FY 24 budget because the House of Representatives, Republicans leading the House of Representatives, recently passed legislation to increase the debt limit, but they also included some significant deficit reduction measures, which again would have an impact on FY 24. It would set some, some overall spending caps for federal spending for the next 10 years, starting with FY 2024. And I believe it's, briefly, it would roll back spending in FY 24 to FY 2022 levels, and then cap increases each year from there at 1%, so lower, well, lower than inflation. Where that will probably have an impact on Beaumont, if that were to become law, is that one of the other things that House Republicans at least and, and others have not wanted to cut back on defense spending, and that takes up about half of the federal budget, more than half of the federal budget every year. So, if you continue to grow defense spending at those levels, you will have to cut back on, in order to meet those caps, have to cut back even more on what we call non-defense discretionary spending, and that is at places like the Department of Housing and Urban Development, CDBG and home funding, the Department of Transportation, road and bridges funding, Department of Labor, workforce development funding. Those might have to, if, if this is what Congress decides to do, would have to kind of roll back spending on that, and again, be very tough to grow those programs over the next decade if they do sort of stick to those caps. So, and, and so while Congress doesn't have to deal with the FY 24 budget until October 1 at the, at the earliest, this debt limit, you know, this debt limit deadline of June 1 is likely to have some, some impacts on, on the federal budget and what kind of programs get funded and don't get funded in, in the coming year. The last thing I'd mention is some of the things that we were going to be working very hard on, on behalf of the city, is continued implementation of the 2021 Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, IIJA. That was the large infrastructure bill that was approved in bipartisan fashion by Congress in 2021. It provides literally, you know, billions of dollars in, in funding. Going back to my comment about Congress wanting to send money to states as opposed to directly to local governments, this infrastructure bill kind of did that. There are very, very few programs within that 2021, thank you, infrastructure bill that send money directly to local governments. There, there are, there's money for states to do things like water, drinking water and wastewater treatment, broadband. There's plenty of money in there, but that goes all to the states. Cybersecurity all goes to the states, and then some of it has to flow down to the local governments. And so, the other half of that is competitive funding, and that's, you saw the Port of Beaumont recently got a large grant through that infrastructure bill. The infrastructure bill was a five-year bill. We're probably about one and a half years into it, so we do have some, you know, some three or so, three and a half years more left of funding to compete for, and I believe we will. And what we also do have now too is, is kind of a little bit of a look. We've got at least about a year of awards that have been made through these programs, and we can kind of see what this Department of Transportation, which has the, the bulk of the transportation, the competitive money, we can see what they're looking at, and we do know that what, one of the things that they've been doing is they've been trying to spread this money around geographically. They've been trying to spend money on projects that address climate change, and they've been trying to spend money on projects that address equity issues, you know, providing transportation facilities and related items to communities that have not been, you know, lucky enough to get those in the past. So, so those tend to be the focus. Not, it's not everything. The good, the good applications do still come to the top. The cream rises. And so, again, I think that we'll be very competitive, again, with the help of our congressional delegation and you folks. So, that was my presentation, but I'm happy to answer any questions. If I left anything out that you folks were interested in, I am happy to address that.
Councilman Turner.
Well, Chris, first and foremost, thank you for coming down. I think it's important, you know, citizens ask to hear from our representation, and you did come down, and I want to personally thank you because when we were in Washington DC at NLC, you took us to the Capitol. You let us meet with Congressman Weber and Congressman Babin, and one of the main things we discussed was funding for sewer and drainage, and it's good to hear that some money, the project that was in work at the time, we actually didn't get funding for that. So, I'm thanking you for allowing us the opportunity to sit with our congressman, and I think it's important as we as elected officials locally, go out and speak to our state reps and our congressman to kind of allocate and try to get funding to Beaumont, Texas. So, you showed great hospitality, and I just wanted to let the community know that you did take us in an office, set up the meetings, escorted us, and you gave us, you know, you showed us good hospitality. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I will say too, that, that is, that has sort of been a hallmark of this council for a long, long time, and our congressional delegation. When it comes to you folks, they leave politics at the door. They, you know, you have constituents who are in common, and, and they want to help.
Thank you. Councilman Felschaw.
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, thank you for what you do for our city. You may not be able to answer this question, but what we hear on the news and what you hear in the halls of Congress are two different things. But how far apart is the Republicans and the Democrats on this debt limit?
You know, I don't think they're too far apart. I think that there's probably a majority, probably a large majority in Congress that does want to address deficit reduction in some way and in a long-term way. I think that on the Democratic side of the aisle, they seem, they seem very firm in that they want to address it separately. They want to do what they would call a clean debt limit increase, and then talk about deficit reduction, which on their side of the aisle would also probably include discussion of the 2017 tax bill and sort of allowing some of those tax cuts to expire. That's, you know, sort of, that, that will raise revenues and, and reduce the deficit as well. So, I think they're closer than you would probably see in, in public to, to something. I actually couldn't tell you whether it's going to be a clean debt limit increase in the next week or so or not.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilman.
Yes, well, Chris, I'd just say thank you. I've watched you over the years, over 30 years. When it was Carolyn Cheney, her spirit continues to live with you, and you've provided that capital edge. You've been able to get in, into the halls of Congress and get things done. I remember the fight for the airport money, and you've continued to fight and work for us. So, I say thank you, and thank you for coming down. Thank you for always taking care of us when we're in Washington, and thank you for getting the dollars back to our city.
Thank you, Councilman.
Chris, thank you. The $33 million that the city has already received from the American Rescue Plan, you know, originally it gave us till December of '24 to obligate the funds, and I believe December of '26 to spend the funds. Can you give us an update on the legislation trying to claw back those funds that aren't obligated yet?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for reminding me that. That was one thing I did want to mention, was that, that is part of the, the House Debt Limit Bill that they approved two weeks ago, does include what they call clawing back unobligated expenses from pandemic relief bills. They're not very specific about the particular programs, but, but I would say that, that you would, that, that anything that is obligated and not necessarily spent, if you have a plan that this council, you know, sort of has approved, I think you're probably okay. But I do think that part of this debt relief bill is going to be some, you know, some sort of clawback of unobligated pandemic relief.
So, just to clarify.
Yeah.
In your opinion, obligated means council designated, not necessarily obligated with vendors who are going to perform the work?
Correct.
Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Simino, out of that 30-plus million dollars, how much is not obligated already?
Council's designated all 33 million, so according to what Chris is saying, it's all obligated.
Yeah, I think, and it, and that, and it's sort of confusing because a lot of, a lot of, a lot of folks in the media are talking about unspent pandemic relief money, and, you know, as we know, there, there is a difference between obligation and spending, and, and the legislation is very specific in that it, it says unobligated. It doesn't say unspent. Thank you for that question. I'm sorry, I forgot to talk about that.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Giglio.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right, now we're moving into public comments, and it's time for any citizen who wishes to speak. You may make public comments on regular agenda items, one and two. If you haven't done so, please complete a green slip and hand it to the city clerk. The city clerk will call your name when it's your time to speak. We'd appreciate if you'd keep your comments to three minutes. Huh? Oh. Well, just skip the consent agenda. Okay. Well, let's do the approval.
No, you just make sure that you tell the citizens they can speak on the consent agenda as well.
I needed to mute myself there. So, we get an opportunity to speak on the consent agenda as well. So, do we have any?
I don't have any at this time, Mayor.
Okay, so we'll move forward on the approval. Is there a motion in a second for the consent agenda?
Move to approve. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussions? All those in favor? Any opposed? All right, motion passes. It's moving faster than my agenda is here. We'll have the reading of item number one, please.
Mayor, council considered resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an advanced funding agreement, AFA, with the Texas Department of Transportation, which is Texas dot. A resolution was passed in November that authorized the city manager apply and enter into this agreement with Texas dot for the 2020 Highway Safety Program. Basically, it's to be used on a signal program, basically upgrading and installing some equipment and software that will allow traffic to flow, communicate, for signals to communicate with each other. The engineering estimate for the projects is 480,706. The city's match was 96,506 with federal funds paying 367,200, and state paying 17,000. This comes from the city's capital program, and staff has recommended approval of the resolution.
Is there a motion for number one?
Move to approve the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, Councilman Turner.
So, city manager, can you just, I just want to make sure the community understands how the traffic flow works and how the study goes with Texas dot. Can somebody kind of speak to the flow? Because sometimes people say the lights aren't synchronized. Is this like the same thing? Can we kind of explain it to the community?
Yeah, I would, but I think Molly, I could do a better job than I can since she's working with that program, so I'm going to ask if she would come forward. Sorry, Molly.
That's okay. Good afternoon. Apologize. Bart's not here today. The interconnecting of the signals is the ability for the signals to communicate with each other. I don't know if you recall, but in 2015, the city did a similar project on College from Hospital Drive to Major Drive, and that greatly improved the flow of the traffic on College Street. So, this project will do the same thing, replace the hardware and the signals from, on Dallin Road from East Tex Freeway all the way down to College Street. We're doing a similar project right now for Fourth Street from Calder to Highway 69 in conjunction with the rehab of Fourth Street. And then also, we're doing Gladys from Edson to Central. So, we're trying to just improve the, the flow of traffic so the signals can speak to each other. And the, the current project is estimated right now for completion July of 2023. We're just waiting. We're having some shipping delays of some minor hardware and software components, but we should be closing out that project this summer.
Thank you, Mayor. That's it. Thank you, Molly.
You're welcome.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Motion passes. So, if I'm following correctly, the city manager, will you please take us into the work session?
Thank you, Mayor. Work session is to review the proposed fixed route realignment for the zip, which is our bus system, also known as the transit management of Beaumont. We have Ms. Claudia S. McGill here today to discuss this item for us, and we also have Mr. Boone who can add information.
Good afternoon. Claudia S. McGill, you're Transit General Manager. Congratulations to, to all of you and to all of us as well. I just want to introduce real quick some of the staff here that just give him a little bit of credit and one minute of glory, if I will say so.
Willow White, I'm Director of Finance and HR.
Officer AJ Transit Supervisor.
Colin Jackson, President of the Union of Alameda Transit Level 1031.
So, I just want to get this opportunity that I'm here, like I said, to present some of the staff. A few notes before we go into the presentation. I promise to make it quick for, for all of you and for, for the record and for peace of mind for all of us that are going to hopefully make a decision today. Before we brought this presentation to you all for consideration and for approval, we had several internal meetings with staff to make sure that what we're going to bring, it makes sense for all our stakeholders. After that, we have our meetings and conversations with our employees, make sure that we get the right input. Obviously, our drivers are the ones that know what's going on out there. They're the ones that have the information, and basically, the actual, I want to say feel in touch with the community, what, what the needs are in reality. So, I really take a lot of, you know, consideration to what they have to say. Second to that, we ran some surveys with the community, with the actual riders, again, to make sure that what we're proposing is not going to bring a negative impact to those actual riders. Actually, what we're trying to do is promote and bring new people into the transit system. So, we, like I say, we touched pretty much all the stakeholders. So we, like I say, we touch pretty much all the stakeholders, our internal group of people, our passengers, and actual service, like I said. And this is where we are today, bringing you a a presentation, a summary of all those actions. Again, I want to make sure everybody knows for peace of mind what we're bringing has been filtered several times before it got to this presentation. So like I said, I promise to try and be quick. All the changes that we do, we're going to consider right at the top to safety. We want to try to bring improvements that are going to deliver safer service for our community. Second to that is we're going to improve accessibility, making sure that we are what we are needed. And aligned with that is accessibility for people with special needs, you know, people using mobility devices. So we're mindful where those populations are. We're trying to reach and get as close as we can to them. And definitely better efficiency. Day in and day out, we, you know, we're challenged to work with what we have and do more and do better. So we're very mindful of that. So better efficiency is going to be number three for no particular reason other than we want to deliver safe service. And I can go through all of them, but I promise you they're all going to be with the last slide on mine. You know, we want to make sure that we bring a safer service. We want to be as efficient and we want to bring the service what is needed. So like I said, I can go through all of them. But I think at the end of the day, what makes what it's going to be more valuable for all of us is to review the specific changes. So if we can get to the actual, if anybody has any questions, please, by all means. So this is what we do. We have 10 existing routes and the commitment and the promises that we're going to maximize the equipment that we have so we can better connect our community. We have five routes for consideration today. And what we emphasize that we're not going to have any significant or negative impact to the actual passengers today. And this is where we start. This is the current Parkdale Route. And all we're doing in this, it's kind of hard to follow, but we can go to the proposed change, which will be the next one. The route right now runs along on the side of the highway. And we'll be having some really near misses where we're boarding and deboarding passengers on right on the side of the highway. And we're trying to push that to the back, which is the street, can't read the name.
Concord.
Concord, I'm so sorry, to the back. So we're going to continue to service the same business that are on the front of the highway, and they all have access to the back. We're also going to be bringing the bus closer to those other businesses and some of the neighborhoods right behind it. So that's the only change, nothing else. This particular one, like it's rich at the bottom. We're going to service additional businesses that are sit on that Concord Street. We're going to be able to provide safer service to the current passengers. Of course, the city has invested a lot of money into replacing that fleet. So we want to make sure that we try to avoid as much as we can rear end collisions by being boarding and deboarding passengers along the highway. So this is the first proposal, and that's all we're doing to the Parkdale Route. I don't know if anybody has any questions. Yes, sir.
One stop, is that in, I guess, according to here, so will that be in the back or, okay, I see it right there on the front by the Chase Bank, I guess?
At my parking.
Okay, but it's not on the on the service road, it's in the Parkdale.
Correct.
All right.
Thanks.
Yeah, in reference to the mall, I know at one point a few employees asked about, you know, the time they get off around eight or nine o'clock. Do we actually have a bus that comes around that time when they get off?
Last bus would be at nine o'clock.
Okay, perfect. So thank you. That was something a resident asked me prior to this meeting when they seen this on the agenda. So that's why I want to ask. Thank you.
And we'll confirm and send back some information through city management to get you the information, the specifics. Yes, sir. Any other question on this particular route? If no, we can just go to the next one. South 11, this one is a little bit more complex where we are, we can go to the first change. Basically, what we're doing is we avoiding some of the areas that they're basically just adding transit time. And we can go to the next slide that shows the proposed change. This one in particular, we're avoiding that street here downtown. Regularly, it gets shut down for events and we're asked to reroute. So basically, what you're going to see on this presentation, we're kind of cleaning up. We're trying to do those baby steps that are going to take us to an eventual, most likely, realignment of the complete system where we can be more efficient. But these are the baby steps, like I said. This is taking us out of the way of events and things of that nature. And the San Francisco District also has that particularly different stone that our buses that are really heavy are trying to starting to make a dent on those. So we're also being mindful of those different situations. So that's basically the change that you see here. Go to the next one. This one is, and like I said, this is like a lot, a lot of detail. But basically, we're avoiding certain turns that are going to allow us to be, increase our frequency. We, again, we took service on this area. We're not moving away from somebody that needs the service. So basically, we're just, instead of going into that turn that you see there, that is, it has the, it's crossed out, we're just going to continue straight. So this individual, for whatever, you know, we will have one or two passengers on that area, they're going to continue to be able to access the service, might have to walk an additional block. But based on the surveys that we run, really not that many people use that that backside of the route. But we're going to be gaining additional trips by doing these changes. The next one at the bottom is it's basically the same. We're removing service from area that for some reason they mature. That's the way I say it, or that's the way we use in transit. Some of the neighborhood mature to the point that we don't have as many riders as we used to have. So we're bringing the service out of those locations for different reasons. And by doing so, you can look at the at the notes, we're going to be adding trips, which means people are going to be able to see that bus more and more often, which is something that I'm pretty sure some of you might get from the different areas of the city that would like to see the more the bus more often. So this is going to provide for that. And that's all we're doing on on that particular route. I don't know if anybody has any questions. If not, we'll go to the next one, which is Pine. This is also a little small change. Instead of making that turn, we can go to the actual change. Instead of making that turn, we're going to continue out all the way to the back of that area. That's the division. By doing so, it's an additional block for us. It's not a whole lot, but we're going to be able to reach out to neighborhoods, actually apartment complexes. There's also a school on that back area. And again, residents that might be using the service right now on that street that we're turning right now are going to be able to access the bus just one more block away. We run surveys. This is not going to impact anybody in a negative way, but we're going to be bringing the bus service closer to the entrance of those apartments, complexes around, I believe it's Lucas. There's a school and some other small businesses. So again, we're bringing the bus closer and hoping that we're going to be able to attract new riders. And that's all the change on that particular one. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
How, I guess, not only the regular customers, but all those citizens, how are they going to be notified of these changes?
So what we did, again, we took those surveys and that was possibly about three, four months ago. And we realized that the time, you know, it's passed since then. So what we did is we posted notices in the buses. We posted notices at the Dallin Bowl Station, large notices. And we we received help from the Communication Department. They were able to put like a QR code. Pretty much everybody has a smartphone. So they will be able to just pretty much aim to that QR code. And that will take them directly to this entire presentation in our website. We also have what we call rider alerts that are posted in the same webpage for people that, you know, normally access our website for route information, for the times. They can go in and access this entire presentation. And also for the general public to know, they can submit requests. They can email us directly, and that email is monitored regularly. So if anybody has any concerns or whatsoever, they can reach us directly at that point in time. So general public, they're being advised by posting, which for the most part, people are going to see those at the Dallin Bowl Station, in the buses, and via our website.
Thank you.
Councilman Doherty, there was also a public hearing that'll be held after the workshop. And per the state, the law will have a 14 days. Well, all of that will continue, so we'll meet the requirement and the federal regulations as well.
Thank you.
Councilman Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. So are y'all physically adding any more bus stops?
On the on the new area that we're extending the service, the answer is yes. Like that particular area, like Lucas, if we can go back, I'm sorry. I don't know if that's West Lucas right there. We're going to be mirroring those stops that there were on the on the previous street. We're going to mirror them to the to the back street now, Lucas, West Lucas. Plus, we're going to be adding bus stops for those key locations, whether the school, the access to those apartment complexes. And if we we are able to identify any other needs, we'll be more than glad to add them if needed.
So how are y'all, how are y'all picking the locations again?
So the first, I guess, consideration is going to be accessibility to larger groups of people, apartment complexes, there's a school, not in this example, but like senior centers and things of the likes, public libraries, any big concentration of people, right? And then again, if we became aware with special request by a business or any other special need, we'll, you know, we'll try to accommodate as much as we can. We'll always run any new bus stop through the traffic department so we make sure we don't put the bus, you know, in danger. We don't, you know, block any accesses to businesses, to residences and the like, so.
So are y'all reaching out to the property owners to confirm that they're fine with a bus stop going in front of their location?
My practice will be yes. And this is the first time we're going to be doing this in quite some time. That's my understanding. So we will let them know we're going to be positioning those bus stops.
Okay, one more question. So maybe I'm getting ahead of myself. But on the next item where we're going to be voting on this, it talks about the funding source. They say none is required. So where's the money coming from for this?
So no, no additional funds would be required for the realignment, but.
How would there be no additional funds if we're going to add bus stops?
The cost of the sign is minimal, but you could actually shift them around. But in terms of funding this, it's a combination of city general funds, FTA funds and text dot funds fund the whole system. But in terms of the cost of the new program, it's minimal.
So there's not going to be the the new bus stops, the covered canopies, the concrete, the?
No, those are referred to as shelters, and those are very expensive. And so no, that would not be part of this project.
All right, thank you.
Move to the next immediate one. This is the South Park route. We didn't cover this one. No. And we can go to the to the condense. So. No. This is the. Okay, with the South Park, with South Park, okay. So this, basically, we can go to the proposed change. It's just a slight extension where we were contacted, the city was contacted to provide services to a new BA's office. And basically, this is the reflection of that need. It's going to add time on this in this situation because we're basically extending the route. We're trying and find ways to minimize, to be more efficient. And we're, you know, I'm very fortunate to tell you that we have a really good work relationship with our union, and we're still working on fine tuning this so this doesn't have a big or negative impact on current riders. So we're going to try and do our best and to stretch the services within the existing times. But if needed, we might add, have to add some additional time. But that's basically all the change that you're going to be seeing here. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Yes, on this route, this Florida Street, you do realize that Florida and Avenue A has been closed for quite some time, and it it may be closed for a while.
It will be closed. We look at a couple of alternatives, whether going out to the next immediate street. But that's going to put us into in the middle of neighborhoods, so it's going to add more time. So in the meantime, that that work is completed, which, like I mentioned, might take a while, we're going to reroute the bus around the highway until that work is completed. So basically, we're going to go out to that intersection, do a turn and come back. And that will be while the work is completed. The other option was to go through neighborhoods, and that's, that was definitely that we, something that we will not recommend because that will further delay the route.
One thing that I I noticed is Lamar had a big influx of international students. And I think something that might be good to look at in the future is maybe get with the president of Lamar and see if we can implement some type of route that maybe it get them to the grocery store or something to that magnitude. Because I know when I talked to Dr. Tome, he did say they had a bit influx of international students. And maybe that's something in the future we can look to. So I think that'd be a good opportunity to kind of connect and work with Lamar University. And lastly, just a compliment to you all, you know, to see the union up here with leadership. You know, since I've been on council, I haven't seen this type of connection. And I just want to say thank y'all for working together. I noticed it, and I want to compliment y'all on that. So thank you, okay?
Thank you. We do provide service to Lamar, but we'll definitely reach out, see, you know, what additional services we can do for them. My experience, they might have like like a shopper route specifically certain day out of the way where students or residents or a specific location can, you know, have specific needs. So I will reach out through city management and make sure, you know, we we get approvals and get the right contacts so we can work with them and find out how can we better service them as well. We already servicing the university. For sure, we're looking to it. I don't know if anybody has any other questions on this one? No? And Laura will be the last one. If we can go to the actual change. And this one, I'm trying to find my position on this one.
So that's 11th 11th Street to Tacoa?
Yes, okay. Yeah, I lost my train of thought. So this one is another one that we're trying to avoid bringing the bus into the access road of the highway, which it gets to be really, really challenging, especially during the rush times and actually throughout the day as well. So basically, we're bringing the bus through the back, no impact to anybody because we're mirroring every bus stop that they're on the front or putting them on the back. And by doing so, we're going to, again, no impact to current riders, but we're going to be able to bring the bus closer to potential new riders users on that back street. And the bus is going to cross using the traffic light instead of just actually asking our drivers to jump into the traffic on the side of the highway. So like I said, most of, if not all, these changes have safety on mind, efficiency on mind, and bringing the bus stretching without impacting cost or actual operations of the infamous MNO, without putting any impact into that and providing more service and bringing the service closer to the actual users. And I believe that will be the last one.
Anybody else? Councilman Getz?
Thank you for taking the time to look and see how you can make your bus routes more efficient and safer. I think that's always an important objective in basically half the bus routes you have now. You've looked at that. One of the things I'd like to know, is it true that you can now use GPS technology to actually track in real time where buses are? And if they're coming towards you, if you're at a bus stop or if you just missed it, is that something that you're able to offer at this time?
Yes, actually, that's been offered. We have an app. It's called TransLock. And you can actually view it directly in a website, the zip website, which is part of the city's website. So yes, you can have access to that. I mean, any resident can have access to that and view in real time where the bus is, you know, approaching your location.
I think that's very useful. The other thing is I had previously asked, and I think I was provided a total number of unique individuals that actually use the bus service. I just want to confirm it was like between 600 and 700 individuals regularly use the bus on a on a regular basis. Is that number accurate, or is there a different number?
I don't recall the exact number. I believe it was definitely higher than that. And it's obviously a calculation based on the daily ridership that we have that is going to identify. Obviously, we we're never going to know for sure who's riding the bus today, who's riding the bus tomorrow. But based on the. But based on the ridership, I think it was more than 5,000. And I'm looking at Mr. Boone because I know he, he provided that information. Yes, that, that will be the number, but I believe it's more than 5,000, unique riders. Be more than glad to bring that next opportunity or send that directly to you.
I, I would like to know what that is. Chris, does that number sound?
We can, I don't recall the exact number. We can certainly pull it for you. As we discussed, it's, it's difficult. It's kind of extrapolated numbers. It's difficult to know exactly how many unique riders. But in the STS service, we do have that data. We can certainly show, share what we do have. So.
I believe we, we send that information, but I'll go ahead and reshare with Mr. Boone so he can send it to you all.
Thank you.
For reference, yes, sir.
Chris, what, what exactly do you mean by unique rider?
Well, so the question has been posed, especially by Council Gets. In, in other words, how many, how many of our citizens use the system? And I think, you know, it's a fair question in terms of, okay, this is what it's costing to operate the system. How many citizens use it on a regular basis? And when you look at, a lot of our data is based on ridership, which of course would be perhaps the same individual using it repeatedly to go to work or school or wherever they need to get to. But I think the question is, is kind of how many, how many of our citizens use it on a regular basis?
When you say regularly, you mean daily?
Well, it could be daily or if you say unique, it could be you only use it maybe once or twice a year, but that's still somebody who's using it. And again, if I could take the opportunity just to thank Claudia and her staff and the union for, you know, there's a lot of transit models and, and analysis that can go into it. But I think the, the day-to-day, the drivers and the folks who are on the road in the system every day, that's I think our best, our best value to try to make the most efficient system as possible. Because again, we're competing with other modes of transportation, bikes, cars, of course. So we wanna try to make the most efficient system as possible so that we have more riders in the end.
Riders using the new bike racks on the front of the buses?
Any other discussion or comments? Well, thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Great to see you.
Mr. City Manager, will you take us into the public hearing?
Yes, Mayor. Public hearing to receive comments on amending, amending the ZIP's fixed bus routes. And I may, if you, if you will, open a public hearing to receive public comment and then close the public hearing afterwards.
Public hearing is now open? Has anybody signed in, Tina?
Yes, sir. Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Hello, Mayor, Council. Congratulations, Mayor. That was a good report on the bus system. And my only comment is we gotta use some creativity to try to get more riders. And I was thinking along the lines of, of having a free week where people can just ride the bus. Anybody can ride the bus. And also, the bus can stop when you wave them down. Not that you have to go to the bus stop, but you could just, you could be on the road where the bus is coming and wave them and they'd stop and pick you up. That may be a traffic problem, but that's, that's a little comment to be creative in the ridership because we sure need some riders on those buses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, may we have the reading? Oh, oh, Mr. Petrie?
Eric Petrie, 32, I think that's, is it 32 or 3705? 3705 East Lucas Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Congratulations to all y'all. My name is Eric Petrie. I filed out a petition, 2021, August the 5th, about Lucas bus stop on the corner of Lucas and Pine Bird, 3705. Prostitutes, drugs, homeless at the bus stop. I know the city manager just got here and he tells me he's been busy. I understand. But for two years, almost two years now, nothing's been done. The other day, the union rep drive the bus, came to 3705 East Lucas. A young lady set fire. So I called 911 Center Fire Department. They made her put it out. Okay, he didn't leave. He did the right thing. Wait till they got there. The other day, three fights. The police came. When they came, I said, watch out officers, they gonna fight you. Sure enough, the boy tried to fight the cop, slammed him down, took him away. It's just terrible. We got registered voters at this building. They all signed papers. I turned it all in. This bus stop need to be removed. Number one, when that bus stop at 3705, the bus stop stopped there, he got one block to go across that track to switch lanes to go down Hill Big Road. Okay, if you move that bus stop backwards towards the Triangle Pawn Shop, that'll give that bus driver enough time to cross over, then get to the railroad track in Hill Big and turn left. Cause Lucas is Interstate 10 now. It is terrible over there. Something gotta be done about this bus stop. At first, they say they'll move the bus benches. That didn't happen. We're gonna leave the top so they can still have a bus stop. If you remove the bus seats, they can't sit there and hang there all night long. If somebody wanna move there and see people doing drugs and loping over, who gonna wanna move there? That bus stop got to be moved backwards away from the building. Something got to happen. It's terrible. Y'all just don't understand. They fight the police. And let me tell you about the police. Police come there and they arrest them, make it look like they arresting them. They go around a block and let them out the car. Four hours later, they go right back there again. They get to scratching like bugs on them. They don't wanna touch them. They get naked and get to doing all kind of stuff on the sidewalk. These old people, they don't even wanna come out in their wheelchair no more. That bus stop got to go or move it backwards so you can get a bus stop, the driver enough time to cross over. Cause when he stop at 3705 East Lucas, we get on the bus. He got to look in his mirror, cause Lucas is Interstate 10 and he don't have enough time to get over to cross over.
Thank you, Mr. Petrie.
Help us, bruh.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, may we have the reading of item number two, please? Oh, we're closing public hearing now.
Yes.
Now may we have the reading of item number two?
Thank you, Mayor. Basically, it's consider amending the ZIP's fixed bus routes. You've heard their report that was given to you in the council. And you've had, had a public hearing, so council, consider amending the ZIP's fixed bus routes according to what, what was presented to you.
Is there a motion for item number two?
Move to approve item number two.
It's been moved and seconded? Is there any discussion?
Mr. Manager, can we, can we see if we can address Mr. Petrie's concern? Because I do recall the petition when he did come up here. Can we see if we can do something about?
Sure.
Maybe moving that bus stop farther towards the shopping center where the Concord and Lucas just move it further towards that way so it can kind of address his concern if, if possible?
Yes, we'll, we'll work with staff and, and zip to find a resolution to that issue.
Anyone else? All right. All in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That is correct. I was testing you.
That was smooth.
All right, item number two, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now's the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make public comments, please complete a green slip and hand it to the city clerk. The clerk will call your name when it's time to speak. We appreciate it if you keep your, keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium and the red light will come on when your time is up.
Dylan Richardson, 4575 North Major Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
How y'all doing? I'm gonna be honest with y'all. Y'all know I'm, I'm pretty negative when I come here. I don't have any good things to say. And I don't know what it is, but something feels different today. I don't know if it's the new mayor getting sworn in or what it is exactly, but I do feel good. And I do implore each of you to contact the president of Lamar, Dr. Jaime Taylor. He will be petitioning the council publicly and hopefully in private on different matters. Uncle Samuel, I'd like to congratulate you on your reelection again. Councilman Feld, Shaw, Turner, Getz, Duryo and Neil, I'd like to congratulate y'all as well. And I look forward to working with y'all over these next two years.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson.
Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas.
Greetings, Mayor Roy West. Congratulations on your election and congratulations to all the councilmen for their reelection. Your, let's see, may your service to the city of Beaumont be very productive. Your fellow council, councilmen have shown they are very interested in serving the citizens of Beaumont and seeing that all the services of the city function at a peak performance. You are inheriting a great staff. Mr. Williams, that city manager is well-prepared to manage with many years of experience. Helping him in that is, is his assistants, Mr. Boone and Mr. Lee. And they are attentive and, and they have the information that you need. Of course, in our safety division, we've got the fire chief, Earl White, police chief, Mike Singletary. And Mr., I just go back to Mr. Boone, he, he is available to answer all the questions. He has many years of experience and I'm sure he's sharing all that with Mr. Lee. Okay, where's Mr. Bart Koby at? Our center works manager, he's got the big job of supplying all of our, our water sewer and streets. And, and he always is prompt with any answers at the city services. Okay, our, our city financial officer, Mr. Semino, he's, he, he's, he's prompt with all our finances and he prepares that budget and has all the answers. I'd like to encourage him on the city bond issues to contact ExxonMobil, see if they can buy the whole package. Yeah, I think we've lost some of our millionaires, so, so they may, they were customers, but I don't know if they're still available, if they're trust funds or what have you. Okay, sitting next there is Mrs. Bruce Hard with all the clerk duties and the election duties. And last but not least is Ms. Reed, the city man, the city attorney. She can manage the city. She's the legal mind for the city. You will hear from her with a, a quiet voice during the council meetings, keeping the business at hand legal. There's, there is many more department heads that keep the, the, stop that. There's many more department heads that keep, that keep the city functioning. Thanks everyone for serving.
Thank you, Mr. Crabbe.
Mr. Petrie, you checked public comments. Were you done or did you wanna speak again? You're done. That's all I have then, Mayor. Thank you.
So now's the time for council member comments. Councilman Neil?
Thank you, Mayor. Just once again, I'd just say congratulations and look forward to working with you. Somebody needs to fact check me on this, but I think Kelly High School also just won the TAPS Division II State Baseball Championship. So congratulations to Kelly.
Councilman Sam. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Again, congratulations to everyone and also to the staff. I know transitioning one council to a new council, a new mayor is, is, there's a lot of work involved. And we appreciate the staff and all the work they've done over the last couple of weeks to make this day happen. So thank you, staff.
Councilman Turner?
Roy, congratulations and welcome to the team. It's our job up here together to make this team the best team we can make it. And we'll be supportive and we're looking forward to get some work done. To Mr. Petrie, thank you for coming and speak up. I appreciate you coming. Mr. Crabtree, you're always a delight when you come to the podium. We really appreciate you. So thank you and please keep coming. Mr. Crab today then, that's what we're gonna stick with then. But, okay, well, Mr. Crab, I got you. So I will say these elections are gruesome. You know, it's a lot of hard work, a lot of effort that's put into them. And I thank all you guys for working hard because it's not easy. You know, a lot of sweat, hard work, tired nights, long hot days going to this. And I appreciate y'all doing this to serve the community, man. It means a lot. I'm ready to get to work. So thank y'all. Appreciate everybody who voted.
Thank you.
Mayor West, congratulations. We go back a long way. A lot of people might not remember, but when my wife ran for Texas Assessor Collector, you actually served as her campaign treasurer. So she is, sad that she couldn't be here today, but she is certainly thinking of you and congratulates you as well. And we are looking forward very much to working with you and the rest of my colleagues on council. Congratulations on all of your re-elections. Look forward to having a productive term and let's get to work.
Absolutely. Councilman?
Mayor West, once again, congratulations. And I can't say, as me and Mike can both say, it's a lot easier when you don't have an opponent. But I hope that every council meeting for the next two years go as smoothly as this one did today. And we'll be getting out there at 3:30. That'll be great. But once again, congratulations to all my fellow council members as well on your election. And look forward to working with you guys. And like Councilman Turner likes to say, I'm gonna steal your saying, man, teamwork make the dream work.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, congratulations to all of you for your reelection and congratulations, Mayor West. I'd also like to mention staff. Staff has done an outstanding job. They continue to do an outstanding job. Elections are tough on staff members. You, we won't believe how tough it is for them to continue to do their job and, and, you know, and continue to make sure things are happening, but also not do it, something that's offensive to, to the people who are running. So it's tough on them. So I can see some relief on their faces too, for sure, in what they're doing. Couple of updates. The project update book, you'll be getting it this week with a list of all our active projects. So we'll be getting that out to you this week. And unfortunately, I got an, we hope to have an update on our meeting for Thursday. We've got some glitches happening there, so I'll be letting you know how that works out this afternoon. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, my favorite, no, I'm just kidding. I look forward to working with you all again for the next two years. Should be fun. I grew up with a lot of brothers, so this is just a, you know, fun activity. But no, Mayor West is gonna be a good time. This is a good group of gentlemen to work with. They're really productive. And as it works, I don't think you can outwork AJ, but please don't try.
Just congratulations to everyone and especially to, congratulations to you, Mayor West. Look forward to working with everybody.
Congratulations, Mayor West. It was a pleasure meeting with you last week to hear your vision for Beaumont. I look forward to meeting more meetings with you and the entire council. It's, it's really an exciting day for me here in Beaumont, knowing that we're gonna continue to, to improve the city and make it much better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just echo what everyone else said. Just congratulations to the city council and the mayor and I look forward to working with all of you.
Did you wave me off?
Just congratulations to all of council. Mayor West, look forward to working with you for the next two years. Just congratulations to all of council, Mayor West, look forward to working with you for the next two years, it's gonna be a blast.
Well, and I just, I wanna thank all the staff, they've been wonderful, gotten to certainly meet everybody up here, and everybody's been very warm and very helpful. Virtue's not in here, I don't think, right now, and she had everything down here, so everything I got wrong was because I got it wrong, and I wasn't looking at it. So I thank Virtue, and I would also like to ask the staff to look at any possible efficiencies we might be able to do for future council meetings, as well as looking at the prospect of evening meetings, and what other cities our size are doing, so that we can discuss that coming up. And otherwise, thank you all for being here, and meeting adjourned.